...to Manchester, England, offering a way for travelers to get into northwestern England faster.
Normally I go through Heathrow and there's usually a four or five hour layover just to get back to Manchester. So I've been waiting for this flight for like over 30 years.
The service is fantastic. I love it and we keep coming back to them every year.
Currently Thomas Cook Airlines offers two flights a week and is a seasonal flight which will only operate until October, but it will return next spring and give passengers an opportunity to choose from more flight options.
But it's very much the model of Thomas Cook Airlines to put on more service in the second season.
Thomas Cook Airlines is the largest transatlantic airline out of Manchester. From LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Officials say Thomas Cook Airlines is the largest transatlantic airline to fly out of Manchester. While taking a few crucial steps could ensure better odds of survival for you and your family in a large-scale emergency, Anna Marcos shows us a South LA community is doing just that as the city takes part in America's annual Prepare-a-Thon event.
In a real-life mass disaster, chances are your community may see few of these guys, the real-life firefighters, and a lot more of these, CERTs, or Community Emergency Response Teams, regular citizens like you and me, trained by LA firefighters to jump into action when disaster strikes.
In a large-scale emergency, your infrastructure is going to be destroyed, your water mains will be blown up in the street, your roads will be impassable. It may be hours, days, or a week, and that's why we tell people, be prepared to be able to survive on your own.
Volunteers in South LA got practice doing just that as the City of LA's Emergency Management Department and residents teamed up to take part in America's Prepare-a-Thon, a mass national event where volunteers run drills on what to do in an emergency.
It's a simulated earthquake and what we have here today, 7.8 magnitude earthquake.
We know that our city has 4 million people in it and our first responders can't come and rescue them right after a disaster.
So neighbors took care of neighbors. They set up a triage and treatment area to take care of the dead and wounded, and they even set up an animal care center for stranded animals.
That's where we really save lives, is the initial response.
Officials say all residents, even those with no training, can help save lives if they practice the five steps to neighborhood preparedness. Identify an area in your neighborhood that you can adopt, such as your street or apartment building. Recruit a leader. Scout your area so you know where the dangers and hazards are in an emergency. Build a team with your family and neighbors and map out a plan for what to do when disaster strikes.
It's not a matter of if, but a matter of when we have an earthquake of this magnitude. Right now USGS predicts that there's a 99% chance of a 6.7 or greater earthquake.
It's really cool when you see a community taking upon themselves to educate themselves.
Officials say at least half of all residents are totally unprepared for what to do if a disaster were to hit. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information on how you can get prepared, visit fivesteplacom or ready.gov. Well, one city agency teams with the White House to help youth in the projects plug into the digital age. Gil Reyes has part one of a special report. Gil?
Yes, Yana, the city agency that oversees this newscast as well as LA City View Channel 35 has partnered with several entities once again to deliver computers to low-income families, this time targeting low-income housing communities throughout the city of Los Angeles.
Christian Blankenship takes home his family's first-ever home computer, and it's free. He and his younger brother live in the Rancho San Pedro Housing Project.
But he went up to me just the other day talking about, "I can't read, I don't know how to read, you know, I don't know how to get on the internet, I don't know how to look up things." And this is a big opportunity for him. I'm gonna set it home, I'm gonna teach him all about it, he's gonna do it in school. He's just, 'cause, you know, we live in projects, you know, like, there's a lot of bad things that happen here.
Many young people in this public housing facility by the LA waterfront struggle through life, struggle through school. One reason is the lack of computers in the home for schoolwork and other necessities.
It is super expensive right now, so I think it will be a good idea for this program to continue to strive.
This program is called Connect Home, an effort by the Obama administration to provide free computers to kids and families in public housing. Families also receive discounted internet access, around $100 for the hookup device. This provides four free years of broadband through Sprint. In the city of LA, 500 families living in public housing have benefited since February.
So we've gone to Ramona Gardens, we've gone to Nickerson Gardens, we've gone to Avalon, we've gone to Gonzaga, now at Rancho San Pedro as well as Pico.
The Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles received the computers from the Hour Cycle LA Pilot Program. Launched more than a year ago, Hour Cycle took thousands of outdated city computers and instead of throwing them away, repaired them for disadvantaged families. The city's Information Technology Agency, or ITA, led this effort with support from LA Mayor Eric Garcetti and City Council President Herb Wesson. In fact, Mayor Garcetti helped hand out around 800 computers to families in Koreatown and Baldwin Village during the initial rollout.
To help the low-income family individual to connect to the internet, to improve their quality of life, to help them get access to better education, healthcare.
While also reducing environmental waste, as many of these computers, useless to the city after a systems upgrade, could have ended up in landfills. And there's another benefit, job creation. The city had hired the new nonprofit group Human IT to do the repairs, and since then, Human IT has grown, adding six full-time staffers to handle the increased workload. New clients include USC.
Because of OurCycleLA, we've been able to get business from local companies and actually companies all across the country. We also got to teach a lot of 100 different volunteers, as well as seven youth around Boyle Heights, the vocation of computer repair. And then this is just the last stage of it, which is giving it away to families, which is the best stage, in my opinion.
Like you said, vital. It's a tool that everyone needs. I mean, I can't even explain how appreciated I am.
I definitely appreciate whoever started this program and I'll be down to volunteer for them too.
Helping to bridge the digital divide. In San Pedro, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Around 80 families from Rancho San Pedro alone received computers. While authorities close in on a major drug operation on Skid Row, a new alliance between the public and private sectors offers job opportunities for those with criminal records, and LADWP opens three public trails at Owens Lake. All these stories in City B. A major drug bust by the LAPD, local and federal agencies, led to the arrests of 19 drug dealers for selling heroin, cocaine, and methamphetamines on Skid Row. Wiretaps, surveillance, and undercover officers were used in the year-long investigation. Almost $2 million, including $600,000 of $1 bills, was seized. Mayor Eric Garcetti joined Chief Charlie Beck to say the operation helped remove a large number of drug dealers who prey on the most vulnerable.
This is about changing the neighborhood. This is one of the many steps that will have to be taken before we can make sure that the heart of this city is as pure as it can be.
Mayor Eric Garcetti launched a Blue Ribbon Commission on Employment Equity, an alliance of private and public sector employers committed to providing opportunities for people who have been historically excluded from jobs that offer career advancement, including those individuals who have been formerly incarcerated. Commission members have agreed to voluntarily refrain from criminal record inquiries until a conditional offer of employment is extended, refrain from asking job applicants about their credit history, and actively work to develop recruitment and policies for populations that have been historically unemployed, including those with criminal records.
And to give people those entry-level jobs on the way up on the ladder, whether it's cleaning the floor and the toilets that eventually allows you to train solar installers, or whether it's here, somebody who can help us by fixing sidewalks and one day get a city pension and a middle-class job. It's an unprecedented opportunity.
The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power recently joined officials to celebrate the grand opening and ribbon-cutting of the Owens Lake Trails, which officials say aim to enhance public access, recreation, and wildlife habitat at Owens Lake while educating visitors about LADWP's dust control efforts on the lakebed. The Owens Lake Trails features three trail areas with a total of four miles of walking paths, overlook areas, and land art installations. The effort is part of LADWP's Owens Lake Dust Mitigation Program initiated in 2001. It has mitigated 96% of dust emissions from Owens Lake to date, according to officials. Complete mitigation is expected by 2017. Well, it's out with the old and in with the new, as a new program is helping residents not only cut their energy use, but save some money too. Rich Samuels has more.
It's new, good size, quieter, you know, it's clean, brand-new. I like it.
James Sebastian is happy about his brand-new refrigerator, one of 177 new energy-efficient units, recently provided free of charge to residents at Fame Corporation's low-income housing.
This will help low-income families to save at least $60 annually on their utility bills.
The opportunity to create greener, more environmentally-friendly apartment complexes grew out of Fame's involvement in LADWP's Community Partnership Program, which provides education on reducing energy and water usage to residents of the 8th Council District.
What's so fantastic about this program is LADWP is really reaching out to low-income communities to be part of the conservation effort, but simultaneously they're helping those low-income individuals improve their quality of life and receive benefit from the community.
The LADWP's Refrigerator Exchange Program partnered with ARCA, the Appliance Recycling Centers of America, to complete the replacement process. This is Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
The new energy-efficient refrigerators use half as much electricity as older models. While a 5K run that'll have you covered in all the colors of the rainbow, tour a legendary music studio as it opens its doors to the public for the first time in six decades, and a day of music and games that's perfect for the whole family. All this and this week's things to do. Also known as the happiest 5K on the planet and the most colorful event this May, the Color Run in Los Angeles is taking place on Saturday, May 21st. The Color Run partners with a charity event at each location, and in Los Angeles, they are working with Back on My Feet, a nonprofit that uses running to help the homeless in changing their lives, and Children's Hospital Los Angeles. So get your old white t-shirt ready and don't miss your chance to get covered in orange, pink, blue, and yellow paint on this exciting 5K run. What better way to give back and have fun? The event starts at Dodger Stadium on Saturday, May 21st. For more, visit thecolorun.com. If you're into music production and have ever wondered how Capitol Studios, which has hosted recording artists such as Frank Sinatra to the Beastie Boys, makes its magic, wonder no more. Created in 1956 and for the first time in 60 years, Capitol Studios is opening their doors to the public. This is a chance to hear stories and witness the place where many recording artists who have created your favorite tunes made their music. Tours will be held in the studio and there will also be a vinyl fair Saturday, May 21st. For more information, visit capitolstudios.com. Calling all Southern California moms, here's an event that is fun for the whole family. The third annual Great Big Family Play Day in Los Angeles only happens once a year and features a day full of face painting, games, crafts, and event meet-and-greets with your children's favorite characters. Grammy-nominated singer and songwriter Lisa Loeb will be performing in a nursery rhyme parade, and the day will also include hula-hoop dancers and a number of performances. You won't want to miss this day full of music and family fun on Sunday, May 22nd, at the Autry Museum of American West. The event starts at 9:30 a.m. and closes at 4:00. For details, visit greatbigfamilyplayday.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, May 17th, and Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloominfield, Bonin, Biscayino, Cidio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Coretz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Great. We'll go ahead and approval of the minutes. We'll start off with that. Councilmember Bloominfield moves, Bonin seconds. Next items, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Councilmember Fuentes moves and Harris Dawson seconds.
And, Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Excellent, fantastic. If everybody can please rise for the flag salute, please rise for the flag salute, and we're gonna ask Councilmember O'Farrell to lead us in the flag salute. Thank you. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. All righty, we're gonna start off first with general public comment. We're gonna go ahead and open it for general public comment for one minute. Oh, let's go, go ahead and run through the agenda first. Yes, thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for keeping us in check. All right, so we'll go ahead and run through the agenda first.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to continue item one for 30 days to June 15th.
All right, that'll be the order without objection. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item two is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right. Next item, please.
And, Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
All right, so now we'll go ahead and go into general public comment. If you have a general public comment card, please give it to the sergeant right away. Ms. Garb, you have, you have a card? Okay, so Antonia Ramirez?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We have a gang epidemic, and the city has not done anything to combat the problems. We've got these wetbacks and gangbangers. I saw a bit of the city beat, who are, we are too busy providing everything for free to these goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers, racist, nosy, jealous, hate-mongering wetbacks and gangbangers. And yet we are doing nothing to provide for our United States military veterans who are homeless on the streets, nor are we providing anything for the baby boomers and legal-law-abiding citizens. Again, I'm really disappointed in Eric Garcetti, our mayor. I certainly will not be voting for him on next election. Again, ladies and gentlemen, we have to recall most, if not all, our councilmembers, including Jerry, Governor Jerry Brown. We've got to put priorities first. That is House, House, our United States military veterans and legal-law-abiding citizens. That is why I'm voting for El Jefe, Donald Trump. God bless America and the United States military.
Great, thank you very much.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. And for identification purposes, Chair of the Anybody But Englander Four Supervisor Committee, check us out. Number one issue of all issues on earth is that there are no transgender bathrooms in City Hall. You're boycotting North Carolina because they won't install transgender bathrooms. At least they're honest about it, and Bonin, Bonin is a joke, he thinks this is a joke, he's jerking off with Bloominfield over here.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, you will not address or attack current members, you'll stick to the purview under this. to the purview under this body, you know the rules, sir.
Jay Walsh Confidential, and we want transgender bathrooms the way they are in Boston for a year at their City Hall where the mayor's name is...
Thank you very much, and, um, appreciate, you're done. Please, now you're disrupting the meeting, go sit down. Go sit down, please, thank you. Alright, so that concludes general public comment, and, uh, so now we're gonna go ahead and roll through the agenda. Item one.
Um, item one is continued, uh, to June 15th, but item two, uh, has cards.
Okay, before we take item two, actually, we've got one presentation, so we're gonna go ahead and do the presentation first, and if I can ask Councilwoman Martinez to come on up for a moment?
Good morning, students. Mr. Englander for presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Madam President, and, uh, colleagues, this is a regular occurrence every year. This is something, an annual event now that we do every year. This is the day, today, where we bring in the Academic Decathlon Champions from Granada Hills Charter High School to the full City Council. This is five years of winning in the last six years. It's unheard of, it's unprecedented. Now, this is the interesting thing that many people don't know, and I always find this fascinating because they get national attention, they are incredible leaders, they have put in hundreds of hours, in fact, 30,000 hours to train and compete for this, 12 hours a day, they've skipped their winter recess, they've skipped their spring vacations, but that alone is not what I find the most fascinating, interesting, and driving. The interesting thing about this, it's a level playing field every single year. They bring in a number of A students, a number of B students, and a number of C students. So every single year, all of the schools that compete nationally are on a level playing field. They're all equal, no matter what. They can't stack the deck, and yet, these guys won again, and again, and again, and again, and again. In 2011, we actually put up a city sign in front of the school, and it was then the executive director of the school, Brian Bauer, we were out there on the lift, and he said, "You know, councilman, I think it's too low. I think we better put the sign up about another 10 feet." And I said, "You know, nobody's gonna see it. If we put it all the way up there that says Academic Decathlon Champions and the year right under it, nobody's gonna see it." He said, "Yeah, but we need room underneath it so we can add year after year after year after year." He was right. We'll be out there again, we've already ordered the sign, that's gonna be out there for everybody in this community to see as they drive by, year after year after year. And in fact, I know these young leaders, these men and women, these champions behind me, will be driving by with their kids and their grandkids, because that sign will be there forever, in perpetuity, to acknowledge what they've been able to accomplish as a team. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, as if that wasn't enough, the total amount of points that you can achieve in this contest is 60,000 in a scholastic merit. They achieved 54,195 points, beating out 50 other high school teams, which is just remarkable. And I think it may even be near a new record. A new record, another new record. Every year, you guys have to beat your own records, 'cause nobody else can set that bar. They won first place during the competition's super quiz, as if it weren't enough. And a special congratulations to Melissa Santos for being the top-scoring student overall in the competition, and voted the team's most valuable team member. If you can imagine, one person leading a championship team, and then taking on and achieving that kind of greatness to be the top-scoring student of the entire Decathlon. Let's give Melissa a big round of applause. Joshua Lynn also displayed excellence this year by breaking the record for the highest individual score in the Decathlon history. Let's give Joshua Lynn a big round of applause. And so now, I'd like to congratulate all the students for their incredible achievement. Uh, many are seniors and graduating this year, all going on to phenomenal schools, to BU, to Berkeley, to Iowa, Iowa State? Iowa State, what were the other ones? And Davis, um, all phenomenal schools, and, uh, and the seniors have a special place because they've carried this team as well. How many were repeating members on the team? One. You carried them on your shoulders, one. It only takes one. And, uh, so I'd like to recognize Ayesha, Mahmoud, Jorge Zepeda, Joshua Lynn, Melissa Santos, Aisha Gupta, Mahina Ukayim, am I getting that right? Okay, nailed it, alright, close, alright. Christopher Lowe, Mark Agali, Julian Duran, Bonnie Danoa, Ahmad Choudry, and Kevin Lee. Let's give all of them a huge round of applause. And now, we'd like to recognize the coaches. This has been an effort, and these coaches put up so much sacrifice. The coaches, so you know, are not full-time coaches, and that's all they do, they're also teachers, they're also counselors, they have full classrooms beyond what they're doing here, the parents who are so involved as well, and have sacrificed so much. Uh, so let's give it up for our coaches, to Matthew, to John, to Rachel, let's give it up for the Academic Decathlon Championship coaches. And now, I'd like Coach Matthew Arnold to come up and say a few words. Coach?
Thank you, and thank you for this recognition. I think, uh, well, first of all, I hope some of our good fortune, uh, applies to the Lakers today in the draft lottery, fingers crossed for them, but, uh, thank you for the recognition, and I think Academic Decathlon is an example of something in education that is working really well. And the reason for that, in, in addition to just the great support we get at Granada Hills Charter, is that we have great students, and all of the students, um, at a certain point in the year, have to make improvements to themselves, both academically and, and personally. Our success over the last few years is, I think, the direct result of that commitment to self-improvement, um, and is a great model of, of what can go right in education. So, thank you very much for this recognition today, and I think I'm gonna pass the mic to Melissa Santos.
Yes.
I would like to thank everyone here for this recognition. It's, it's been an incredible year, now that it's over, I keep looking back, and I look at all the time that I've spent with my teammates who have become my family, and I look back at Alaska, I look back at Sacramento, I look at all the time we spent in between getting to know each other and really growing fundamentally as people, not as students only, but really becoming who we are meant to be. And so, to get this recognition on top of that is just the cherry on top, put it simply. So, on behalf of my team, I would like to thank you. We're just some humble kids from Granada Hills, and to be here right now in City Hall is amazing. Thank you.
Let me say, uh, something else also about our coaches, who've done a phenomenal job, but, uh, Coach, Coach Arnold has actually been the coach here as well on this team for those five championships, and I think, uh, you're the only one that's been here for all five, for all five, right? For all five. Now, if you can imagine what goes in to the pressure of next year, knowing full well, we're gonna be back here, right? That's incredible, and it really takes a team, uh, the coaches, the parents, again, the community, the school, uh, and you've got to imagine, this school is the largest charter high school in the country. The population of this campus is 4,500, 4,500 kids. You step onto that campus, and you can immediately get lost, and the fact that they have organizations and the structure and this leadership, people like Brian Bauer, the coaches behind me, the parents, all the other staff that make sure that no kids gets lost on this campus, uh, and that they lead the way and bring everybody up and work so well together. And as a proud parent of Granada Hills Charter High School, I'm also, uh, a graduate, an alumni, I'm class of 2015, for those of you that don't know, the only one I know that has two high school diplomas. Uh, I was an honorary graduate, I was the only one ever from Granada Hills Charter High School that has an honorary diploma from them, and, uh, really, I'm not on the Academic Decathlon. They stop at A, B, and C students. So if they ever open the door for opportunity, I might look into that. With that, colleagues, I wanna thank you again for allowing me to bring the champions here to City Hall. Let's give them a big round of applause, say congratulations for setting another bar. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Madam President, thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations to our champions. So we'll go all out this way. Madam Clerk, we're gonna move on to item two.
And item two is called special for cards.
Mr. Council President, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, uh, Madam President and, and members. You know, I, I've said this on more than one occasion, how proud I am to be a member of this body, and for a variety of reasons. One thing that I am very proud of is that this council does not run away from difficult issues. If you all reflect back in the past, you would see that regardless of the issue, we have done our very best to address it, and we should be proud of that. We might be accused of a lot of things, but never running away from an issue. And that's, I think, our charge for today, is for this body to have a serious conversation about an issue that many of us have chatted about for years, and that issue is reform of the Department of Water and Power. The reason why this item is before us today is not so that we would take a vote, but so that we could have a conversation about it in preparing ourselves to have a vote sometimes in June, to put together a package that we can present to the public. I can't say enough about all of the people that really helped initiate this process, and I have to start off with our colleague, Felipe Fuentes, and, Mr. Fuentes, I wanna thank you for not only working on this for over a year, but really starting this conversation in January, right around the time we submitted the motion. I want to acknowledge all of the work from the mayor's office, the mayor has been engaged, our city attorney has been engaged, Ron Galperin, our comptroller, has been engaged. The neighborhood councils have been our partner during this discussion. The Rules Committee that is monitoring this situation, which is generating this conversation, has had about five hearings, two of which we have partnered directly with the neighborhood councils, and I have to acknowledge, uh, the alliances and the individual councils that helped us put this together, Madam President. Our first meeting, we had here in this building, and it was sponsored by LANK and its president, Terry Gomes. We then last week moved to the Valley, where the Valley Alliance of Councils, VANK, led by Jill Barard, they helped us, uh, put together what I thought was a very good conversation, and this Thursday, we will be partnering again with our Neighborhood Council, SLANK, uh, in the, which is the, um, the, the South Area Neighborhood Councils, led by Joy Enix, to have a conversation about this. It has been different, the, the Rules Committee has expanded to actually incorporate the Deputy Mayor, um, Romero from the mayor's office, and at every hearing, we've had representatives from the Neighborhood Council, sitting, asking questions as well, and I wanna acknowledge, uh, Mr. Wilkerson, Tony, for all of his hard work. We've had presentations by the CLA and the CAO, we've had presentations by two Neighborhood Council Committees. On Thursday, the business community will be joining us, giving, giving their opinions on DWP, uh, reform. I, uh, we presented a packet to all of the members here to give you an update on some of the things that have occurred, some of the meetings, some of the topics, uh, and so I hope that today we have a very vibrant conversation. Uh, you would, if you pay attention to the agenda, you will see that this is the focus of today's meeting. So it's my understanding that we do have representatives here today from the public that wanna make, uh, comments, so I would suggest that we start with, uh, public comment, and then we may ask Mr. Fuentes to give his presentation before the, uh, body, and then we, uh, as a council have at it. I also wanna recognize Dr. Pickle, uh, who has gone a little above and beyond the call of duty, who's attended every meeting, and who has been a very active, uh, participant. You know, I don't know exactly where we're going to be at the end of the day, but I'm very confident that we will make some recommendations that will help the Department of Water and Power become a more efficient, uh, uh, department, one that we can, uh, all be proud of. So again, thank you for the opportunity to start this, Madam President, and maybe if we could begin with, uh, public comment at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Our first speaker is Meredith McCarthy, followed by Rosemary Jenkins and Blanca de la Cruz. Our first speaker is Meredith McCarthy, followed by Rosemary Jenkins and Blanca de la Cruz. Good morning.
Good morning, Members of Council. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. My name is Meredith McCarthy. I'm Director of Programs at Heal the Bay. I'm here today to support the process occurring to amend the Charter and Administrative Code to create a more effective and efficient DWP. A resilient, water-smart city needs a highly functioning DWP. Being cognizant of the lift of opening the charter, I'm asking today that a check-in occur with the one water process going on between DWP and BOSS. This is a massive multimillion-dollar plan that this council supported to implement. But this process was also very likely going to involve charter amendments and charter changes. Being cognizant of the lift of opening the charter and amending the code and going to the people, I'm asking today that you check in with that process to make sure that one of the many consultants are tracking that process to ensure that we don't have to open this charter up next year to implement that plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rosemary Jenkins, followed by Blanca de la Cruz.
Good morning. I'm Rosemary Jenkins. I have been a staunch supporter of the DWP, but particularly of its workers. I have seen firsthand how beneficial the UPCT program has been under IBW and Commissioner leadership. If we want to address the energy and water reduction mandates, we must vote to expand the programs, which will not only help us meet our goals, but will also boost the economy through reducing the numbers in our unemployed and underemployed sectors. The result will in turn create a more sustainable socioeconomic environment for our numerous and diverse communities. I have had firsthand experience, not only visiting UPCT training classes, but have observed their outstanding and unparalleled work in the communities, even in my own home. What a difference in my own energy reduction and saving on my energy bill. I urge you to vote in favor of improved and expanded hiring practices under a combined civil service and union mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. So if we have Blanca de la Cruz, followed by Antonio Ramirez, followed by Elizabeth Hawley, please come forward. Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
I'm Blanca de la Cruz with the California Housing Partnership Corporation. I am here to speak on behalf of low-income renters and nonprofit operators of low-income apartment buildings, which are also ratepayers. There are more than 64,000 affordable apartments in which the city and the state have made an investment to provide and maintain affordable rents to Angelenos. My organization and our partners have spent the last few years reviewing the department's policies on how they treat low-income renters and the buildings they live in. Unlike other major utilities and best practices, the department does not have a multifamily category and staff and programs focused exclusively on the specific needs of larger apartment buildings. As a result, this market segment is extremely underserved. We have been informed by staff, DWP staff, that they have hiring constraints, and this results in impacting the way they serve, what they're able to do to better serve low-income renters and the buildings they live in. We support flexibility for the general manager and her team to be able to better serve this vulnerable market segment. The coalition of tenants and housing advocates I work with want you to consider the following three proposals. First, make low-income renters a priority and ensure that low-income ratepayers have equal access to the department's resources for energy efficiency and renewables. Second, require the department appoint a low-income renter star. Third, require the department to appoint a low-income renter oversight board with at least 50% representatives of low-income renters and at least two commissioners. I cannot, thank you.
Okay, please come forward.
Thank you. There would be less waste, abuse, and inefficiency if you would just hire United States military veterans that are uniformed and ununiformed, active and inactive. Military veterans are highly skilled, professional, courteous, knowledgeable, intelligent, and they know how to cut costs. Now, here we are, hiring all these wetbacks, nosy racists, hate mongering.
No, you stay, no, 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 no. Stay on the subject.
This whole conglomerate is in dismal financial ruins, not to mention inefficiency and ineptness. Why? Because you're full of wetbacks and gang.
Okay, thank you. Your time has expired. You're off the subject. If I could have the next speaker, you are disrupting the meeting, Ms. Ramirez. You are disrupting this meeting. You're continuing to disrupt, continue, and you will be removed from these chambers. Okay, Elizabeth Hawley, John Walsh, Jessica Goodheart, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Elizabeth Hawley. I'm Legislative Affairs Manager at the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, or VICA, representing the San Fernando Valley business community. VICA supports this effort to allow DWP to operate more efficiently while ensuring accountability to ratepayers. Our committees have developed some guiding principles in order to achieve meaningful governance reform. We strongly support reviewing what types of procurement and contracting decisions do and do not need to go through the board and/or the city council, with the intention of making this process less cumbersome and expensive. It is important that the city council has some way to review rate increases. In terms of the board, VICA would support having five to seven part-time appointed commissioners with an appropriate per diem. VICA supports reviewing personnel rules and potentially removing the civil service requirements. Finally, VICA supports the idea of a cap on the transfer rate, but we would need to see a mechanism for the cap to be increased if circumstances demanded it. We've been working with various stakeholders, including councilmembers Fuentes's office and the mayor's office, over the last few months, and we look forward to continuing this work. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Walsh, Jessica Goodheart, and I think it's Evan Gillespie. Yes.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, tweeting at Hollywood Dems, and Jay Walsh Confidential. Trying to reform the DWP is like trying to reform ISIS. We have no idea how many thousands of miles of rusty water pipes are about to bust. Now, when they bust in white neighborhoods, this color skin here, like UCLA, then they fix everything west of La Brea. Let's take a look at who's sponsoring this. It's a rainbow coalition, isn't it? Bel Air neighborhood, white. Eagle Rock neighborhood, white, largely white. Stark Highland Park neighborhood, largely white. Los Feliz Neighborhood Council, largely white. Lake Baboa, largely white. General Commons, Studio City, largely white. I just want you to know, the Civil Rights Song, and I'm sure you whities up here don't know this song, if you're white, that's all right. Now, if you're brown, you can stay around.
Stay on the sub, stay on the subject.
I'm telling you right now, I want to know what neighborhood council in any of the African-American districts have had an input here. I see nothing here. You just have your Uncle Toms up here. Hollywood Highlands.
Hey, you're off the subject. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And if you would listen to what's said, you'd learn more. Your time has expired. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you, and you're disrupting the meeting. Like, we just indicated that the meeting on Thursday will be sponsored by the neighborhood councils in the southern part of the district. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Goodheart. I'm here to speak on behalf of the LA Alliance for New Economy. I, first of all, I really think it's great that the, and really important, that the city council and the mayor is leading this critical conversation. We're asking the Department of Water and Power to do a lot, and rightly so. We're asking, we're putting forward ambitious environmental goals. We need to fix the customer service and billing problems, keep rates low, repair, and in many cases, replace our water and power infrastructure. Yet, the Department of Water and Power does not have the tools it needs to meet those goals, and 40% of its workforce is at or near retirement. LANE is very committed to ensuring that our public utility continues to be a source of middle-class jobs for LA. And we've consistently advocated for a successful jobs pipeline that's helping to address the retirement crisis and put LA residents to work in career path jobs. However, right now, many of the trainees who are qualified for empty positions, who have received high marks on their civil service exams, are waiting to be hired. We need a faster process that allows more of this jobs program to grow. And giving the DWP authority over hiring will allow it to better fulfill its mission and, as well, it will ensure that more community members have jobs. If the city, I believe if the city, if it gives the DWP the tools that it needs to do its job effectively, the whole, our whole city will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So if I can get Evan Gillespie, Mr. Previn, well, I do see you, Eric Previn, Joanne Garb. Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you very much. My name's Evan Gillespie. I work for the Sierra Club. And I want to start by thanking the council president, councilmember Fuentes, and the others who are leading this conversation from the council's end. You know, to be successful and to make sure that Los Angeles continues to retain its leadership as a clean and green city, we need the department to be successful. And I would echo the comments of my colleague, who said that we are asking the utility to do a lot and have not necessarily given them the tools to be successful. As an environmental advocate, we've seen a lot of these challenges have been identified clearly, whether it be hiring and the ability or inability of the utility to move forward and ensure that every customer can access energy efficiency programs, that we're spending the money, that we're hiring people. These are real problems that have both a customer impact and environmental impact at the same time. It's at the same time as we're looking at the problems that we've dealt with in the past, we want to ensure that the reform package overall also positions the utility to face the challenges that are coming forward. Utility industry is changing very, very, very quickly. We just saw yesterday, utility in Colorado bought wind power for less than three cents a kilowatt hour. And so we know that promoting the environment is also good for customers, it's good for our business, and it's good for our, ultimately, for our bills. I want to make a couple of specific comments on recommendations that have been put forward. First and foremost, we think we should make explicit the dual goals of equity and environment and the utility's mission. We saw in the rate process last year, it was very hard to have a conversation about how to make sure that rates are set equitably and that we're not just, and that we're not assigning cost to everybody without taking a look at who can really afford to pay more on their electricity bill and who can't afford, who's just barely struggling to get by. And so we think that really lifting up this concept of equity is critical for the department, and we think that it's something that the board of commissioners and the staff should be held accountable for and should manage for. Similarly, environmental protection, we think that that is part and parcel with reliability and balancing costs as well as equity. So we think that those two values, equity and the environment, should be made explicit in the utility's mission. We support a full-time board with professional staff. It's a very hard challenge. Two things quickly.
Thank you. Thank you. If I give you more time, I'd have to give others. So if I can get Mr. Previn, Joanne, and Tony, Tony Wilkinson. Yes, Mr. Previn.
Yes, good mor, oh, geez, sorry. Good morning, Council President Weston. It is Eric Previn, a resident from Studio City. I'm also on the neighborhood council, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the neighborhood council, so there is no need to extend me for five minutes, as you are likely to do.
Stay on the subject.
I'm on the subject, sir. So the subject, as you astutely point out, is the DWP reform matter. And I think that this body owes a great deal of credit to Mr. Fuentes, who has been a strong, tall advocate for reform. There has been a lot of proposals circulated around. As a matter of fact, those of us in the neighborhoods who look at the alliances are a little bit confused because there are so many great ideas to do things a certain way. One in particular that is controversial, even as you heard from your trusted members of the public today, should it be a full-time or a part-time commission? You know, should the city council have ultimate oversight at the end for any kind of a transfer? Or, you know, there are a lot of interesting dimensions to this. Now, one small detail that the department needs to understand is that the outreach, though they did have 80 meetings, and this is a city hallmark, in our markets, Studio City, and I know this because I'm on the Studio City, we got a note one night saying, whoops, sorry for the late notice, it's tonight, and that was it. Now, I'm not saying that all the meetings were poorly noticed. I know you heard from a lot of interested parties. Certainly, we got the businesses in the boat, which is obviously critical. We heard from VICA today. I mean, but the ratepayers have raised, and this was in an article in LA Weekly, I'm sure you saw it, sir, you know, is it, is this really ratepayer advocacy, or is this kind of insider facilitation and advocacy for the, for the groups that obviously we want to keep in business, along with your and various other, call it, challenges that we will never be pushed from? So I don't know the answer to that. I'm only speaking on behalf of myself. I do know that the public would like.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. So if I could get Ms. Garb, followed by Mr. Wilkinson.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. My name is Joanne Yvonne Agarb. I'm from West Hills Neighborhood Council. I'm a board member and I'm co-chair of the Government Relations Committee. It's been my experience, my 40 years' experience in the business world, that any time any corporation or company is reformed, it usually starts with the bottom up. They always take, let's, let's get the bottom up being more efficient. And the one thing that I'm impressed about is that this is reform from the top down. So that's, that's a good point. The general manager, she is in charge of a multi-billion dollar corporation, and yet she's allowed signing authority on $150,000. That doesn't sound right. It's, it's, it's not, it's not proving that to be trustworthy. Where I'm in favor of the commissioners being seven part-time commissioners with a per diem, I think that there's a lot of people who are confused about the civil service and having the, DWP have their own civil service. I've heard more comments about, well, they want to get rid of the civil service for the DWP. No, that's not the case. We need the civil service, but having their own civil service issues. There's, I also just saw on today's agenda that the CAO and the CLA have not completed a financial analyst. Do we know when that's going to be done? So, I'm Miguel. And I think that's it. I've gotten all, that, all my points that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your participation. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tony Wilkinson, I'm a neighborhood council, Department of Water and Power watcher, here with my own opinions today, including a note that we're already seeing a lot of the special interests, schools, green buildings, residential solar, about which this reform is partially intended to protect the department. Water and power rates are not taxes to be used for a social purpose. They're customer money that needs to be used to keep costs down and to deliver reliable service. Department of Water and Power most needs two things. First, rates sufficient to give it access to credit, which protects ratepayers. And two, the ability to quickly and smartly reduce its labor force, where 40% of its great craft workers and engineers can retire in the next five years. I strongly support removing the requirement that DWP use the city's existing civil service system and see what the new board comes up with after discussing this with its labor partners, subject to a veto by this body. On rates, no one today is allowed to discuss them in an election year. Having the mayor's commissioners serve their full terms and not at the mayor's pleasure protects the executive. Having, and not asking your body to vote on, affirmatively on every rate increase, but rather to retain a veto over them, partially insulates the council. Hopefully, then, rate discussions can be smaller, more frequent, and more fact-based. I think Mr. Fuentes has shown great courage in bringing this, and I salute you all for your leadership in considering it. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that said, I would like to call on Mr. Fuentes to kind of open things up. And then I'm going to invite several people to come sit around the table as we begin our council conversation. Yes, sir? The floor is yours.
Very good. Thank you, Council President Weston, and colleagues for your attention today on this, what I think is a very important conversation that has been ongoing. And let me just begin by addressing a couple of things that I've heard most recently. This isn't an attack on the current board of the Department of Water and Power. We were at a Rules Committee meeting the other day, and when you look back at a previous board meeting, you see that there were, to be very blunt, ruffled feathers from the commission. And what it is, though, colleagues, it's a conversation that's long overdue on how it is that we it is that we make the rules at the utility work more efficiently, smarter, with the future in mind. So to that, I just want to say that the, the board is doing a great job, and I think they'd do a better job if we gave them the tools necessary. I also want to start off by acknowledging that this isn't intended to be an attack on civil service. This is intended to be a conversation on how it is that we can manage the utility and all of the important functions that the enterprise has in a way that is smarter. And for better or for worse, it is married in many ways to the city of Los Angeles. And I think it's time to divorce some of those functions, but not all of them. And we'll get into that in a second. But, you know, I wanted to also thank you, Council President Weston, and my colleague, Mr. Harris Dawson, who not only chaired the meeting, but attended every single one of the meetings, for taking the show on the road. Our ability to check in with the people that ultimately are going to give us the authority to make changes, our ability to have a conversation with one another to make sure that we get this right before we put it out for a vote, I think is what makes this process so amazing. It is our job, our obligation. And so, Mr. Weston, thank you so much for, for taking the time to do it. We've done four meetings so far. We've got another one scheduled, and I imagine that between all of that, you, like my colleagues, are probably going out on the road and having presentations on the subject. So thank you for the investment of time. And that's to say as well that the staff time associated with this has been tremendous. The work that's been developed, you'll see, colleagues, if you haven't read the April 5th CAO/CLA report, it's one of the better reports I've ever read because it encapsulates every single topic. And to the clerk's office, your agenda item posting, it's precisely what it is that we're talking about. It's a good paragraph, but it encapsulates every single item that is being proposed here. And so we have, I think, before us, a real opportunity to have a conversation with the voters potentially on what it is that we want the utility to do and become. Ultimately, I think what this is about is making sure that the utility is in a position to protect the rate base. Now, this is a difficult conversation. It gets a little in the weeds. Difficult in that ultimately, I think, what the voters and the taxpayers want, and they're distinct sometimes, is that they want to make sure that we're hedging against future rate increases. They want to be in a place where their utility is prepared for the future. And I don't know that we have the best rules in place for that utility today to do that. And it's not to say that it hasn't worked for us. It is to say, though, that I think it can work in a far better way. And so what I'm trying to accomplish here, at least from my education in this process, is trying to understand how we can better balance the needs of the taxpayer and the ratepayer. And as Mr. Wilkinson mentioned, there is a real distinction between that rate base, which is the rate-funded utilities obligation, and a distinction between our city treasury. And so we've got to figure out a way that we massage all of this in a way that's more workable, but ultimately more responsible to the utility. Now, if there was one thing that I would want at the end of all of this, if there was just one outcome, if I had to settle for just one, I'm not going to, but if I had to settle for just one outcome, it would be this. It would be to make sure that the utility operates with a fiduciary obligation to its ratepayers, to enhance and protect the value of the rate base and the enterprise, that's DWP. That definition is, one, widely accepted by other public power utilities, but it's one that I think moves back and forth from time to time, from the interaction that the utility has with the city of Los Angeles and its elected leaders. Now, this is not an easy thing to ask of us because the typical thinking is that we don't give up power. And in many ways, the reform before us really cedes a lot of power. It also does it in a way that it trusts the general manager and its board in a way that historically, in 1925 it used to, but since then, we've clawed back more ratification and concurrence into City Hall because we didn't trust the utility. My fear is that if we continue to build on the distrust of the utility, whether it be political or policy-based, and these days it seems to be about an equal measure of both, we will continue to make the utility operate slower. We won't maximize the efficiencies like the, the presentation by the Sierra Club alluded to. We won't be prepared for the future. And when you think about what it is that the city of Los Angeles is, how it's grown, its legacy, what makes it great, it comes back to many things. Obviously, its residents. I think in some part, the leadership that's been shown by this body and previous ones. But it comes back to the cornerstones of our economy. It comes back to water and power and the distribution of those commodities. And so for us to be ready for a future where there is so much disruption, so much unpredictability, so much crisis recently that threatens some of our supplies of energy, all of that uncertainty necessitates a more nimble, agile, independent utility with oversight by this body and the mayor. And so to balance all of that is the bank shot that we're trying to accomplish here, I think, in this conversation. So let me tell you that I've learned a couple of things from, since the introduction of my motion. I started off, and many of you can read the motion, thank you Christine and staff for helping us build it, but we started thinking about this not in a vacuum. There has been tremendous work done already on this issue. The last couple of decades has at least five different reports from very credible organizations, assessments, audits, that pinpoint different problems in the utility or challenges, let's call them challenges. And they haven't yet been remediated. There are a mix of charter changes and some ordinances and probably some rules that the board can adopt on its own. But nonetheless, we haven't had a comprehensive conversation. We got very close recently when we adopted changes to include a ratepayer advocate, somebody that would watch the volunteer commission to make sure that we were doing the best by the ratepayer. But more recently, this council, or a previous reiteration of this council, had, iteration of this council, had conversations. No less than 12 different motions, 14 different authors were penned. And Mr. Weston, you were notably missed in all of those motions. So I like to think that you're saving the best for last in joining in the motion that we authored together. But we had, and this previous council had, a very strenuous conversation about what it is that is governance. Now is the time, I think, to act on all that we've learned, and certainly the leadership by the mayor and the general manager, who's done a tremendous job in, in helping, I think, identify some of the rubs, and really draft on the momentum that we've gotten from this last rate case, which, by the way, we should celebrate, our rate increases, rather, our rate increases have led to better ratings for the utility. And it's largely because we're doing things a lot differently than we have. But we need to memorialize that difference in action. We need to figure out how to cement that. And how we do that, I think, is in front of us. It's going to be a combination of charter changes, a combination of practice changes at the utility, and certainly some changes here. So let me say that quickly, I, I've changed my thinking. I think that a part-time board of water and power is probably more acceptable. It doesn't have to be full-time, provided that we are able to give that part-time commission a couple of things. They need to have independent analytical staff at their hand, whether it's legal, whether it's policy. But they need to be able to temper the recommendations that come up from the utility with, not making sure that they're accurate, but with a history, just like we enjoy with the CAO. The CAO keeps us honest and, more importantly, keeps departments and their requests, I think, grounded in, in history, and that's really important. We need to make sure that it isn't easy to remove these commissioners. For obvious reasons, we need to figure out how to fortify their role so that they can make the decisions necessary, and they do it in a thoughtful way without fear of removal. I think that we should also make certain that we vet the commission so that we have measured expertise in a variety of fields, and we should increase that commission to seven positions. We should limit the council's participation in the actions of the board, I think, as much as we can, with a couple of notable exceptions. We should absolutely maintain the requirement of the council to approve the sale of any surplus water sales. Our water rights aren't just the council's, but they belong to every single Angelino. They are in the charter, they're memorialized, and it is something that is incredibly more precious every day, as evidenced by the drought. But it is absolutely ingrained in the history of the city, so we should make sure that we backstop any decision with that with elected officials' participation. Certainly, we should make sure that condemnation and eminent domain, same thing, that we have elected officials that are accountable, be the ultimate ratification of those kinds of decisions. But I think the hardest part of this conversation for some is going to be trying to identify how it is that we deal with the transfer. It is something that is so unknown to most of our constituents. I don't think people realize the benefit that having a utility and what it means for Los Angeles and how it pays back the legacy that is this city and service delivery. People don't understand the concept. But we do understand that this number is growing disproportionate to what I think should be more investment in the system. And so we've got to figure out a way, a formula, on how it is that we can balance those interests of the taxpayer and the ratepayer. And I know that we're going to be having a conversation, likely in closed session because of ongoing litigation with respect to the transfer, but it's a, it's a needle that needs to be threaded for the betterment of not just the city, but certainly for the ratepayer. So to end with this, colleagues, it is a very in-depth conversation. It's not to say that it's a difficult one. It is to say that it is one that goes back a long, long time in history. And it's something that I think we have, as the mayor has alluded to a couple of times when he speaks to this issue, a once-in-a-generation opportunity to be able to remediate some of the challenges that the utility has. But ultimately, I think that if we trust the management, if we have more confidence and build rules into the board for swifter action, and if we honor the workforce at the Department of Water and Power, we most certainly will continue to succeed. And it is no question that this body here will have the ability to make this a better proposal. So with that, Council President Weston, thank you so much for the attention and colleagues for your participation in this.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. And I just, you know, where it relates to the litigation, it is my hope that on the 25th or about the 25th of May, that we'll have a closed session to have that conversation. And, and one thing that I neglected to say when we began the process today is I wanted to give a, a huge thank you to the staff that has worked overtime. We have had evening meetings, so the CAO's office, the clerk's office, CLA's office, our sergeants, I want to thank all of, all of them for adjusting their calendars to come and, and take, to participate in this very important function. I also want to indicate that the Rules Committee hopes to, it is our goal to bring before this body in June, recommendations for things that we would put on the ballot. And that's why the conversation today is so important. This is when you can make recommendations, ask questions, give suggestions, and then we will reconvene. So as we get into our question and answer period, I'd like to request that the CLA's office come to the table, the CAO's office come to the table, the city attorney's office come to the table. I would like to have our ratepayer advocate, Dr. Pickle, come to one of the, the seats on the side, Marcy Edwards, Deputy Mayor Romero, please. And Tony, are you here? We're going to ask you to come up to be a, a rep for the council, since you have been engaged in this process from the very beginning. And I think one thing, Mr. Wilkinson, that we have shown is that there, we can create a partnership with the neighborhood councils being equal partners. Okay, so with that said, I'm going to ask the CAO if you would maybe walk through where we are up to this point, some of the, the recommendations and highlight some of the important issues from your report.
Thank you, Council President. I'm Miguel Santana, City Administrative Officer. The CLA and I have a prior point presentation that summarizes our report. And as Councilman Fuentes indicated, what we attempted to do was unpack some of the issues, provide historical context, and lay out options for your council to consider. And we framed this report through a series of questions that would hopefully help navigate your decision-making as you proceed forward. We did this after reviewing a variety of studies and reports, as Mr. Fuentes indicated, that looked at this issue over a period of time. We had conversations with the mayor's office, various council offices, the controller, of course, the Department of Water and Power. We also met with labor leaders to get their input as to some of the issues and what some of the challenges are. And the intent of this report is, again, to lay out a series of options and really begin a starting, starting point for our conversation. There are not any specific recommendations that we provide at this time. The only request or recommendation that we make is that as you proceed forward on this work, that you look at the various reforms holistically. Because the decisions you make on one issue may impact other issues, as opposed to looking at them in isolation. This is, this is not a menu in some ways. It really is looking at it in forms of packages. And so as you proceed forward and decide what is the best option, it is recommended that there be an analysis to ensure that all of the recommendations are in alignment with each other. As the Council President indicated, there's been a number of meetings scheduled, and starting in February, four so far, and another one scheduled on Thursday in South Los Angeles. And then we've been requested to report back on a number of specific questions that come from this report, and our goal is to have a series of reports released sometime this week. Now going on to the first, the first slide. In this first slide, we ask a very fundamental question, and that is, what level of oversight should the council retain over the DWP? The council currently has oversight in a variety of areas, including rate-setting, debt issuance, long-term contracts, franchises, concessions, permit, license, and leases, power contracts, alternative contracting methods, transfer of surplus power revenue funds, acquisition of real property through eminent domain, entry into other business enterprises, and the sale or exchange of surplus water. The mayor has oversight pursuant to Executive Directive IV, which directs the department to submit proposals to the mayor for review prior to submitting it to the board. Generally, the proposals subject to ED IV are those requiring council approval. The various studies have shown that the current governing structure creates some inefficiencies. Specifically, in the 2015 IEA survey, there was a discussion that not, there is no adequate ways to address, or not enough adequacy to address DWP's mission-critical decision-making. And this current structure does not always facilitate efficient decision-making, making accountability cloudy. In 2020, the 2020 Commission Report suggested that the DWP is subject to too much political interference. And in speaking to the DWP, the current government impedes routine procurement agreements, construction contracts, and hiring. So the various reform options that are before you is to continue the council structure that currently exists, remove the council's oversight altogether of the department, limit the council's oversight to DWP matters which direct impacts to the city, such as rate-setting, debt issuance, salary setting, eminent domain, surplus water policy, and other matters of significance. Remove the council's oversight of DWP operations and restrict the mayor and the council oversight to DWP policies and budget only. Or finally, establish a DWP as a council-controlled, non-proprietary department and eliminate the department overall. The final option is, is, again, not necessarily recommended, but again, is to clarify governance and decision-making. The next slide asks a question, what type of council jurisdiction should be provided in Charter Section 245 for DWP matters? As you know, Charter Section 245 authorizes the council to assert jurisdiction over a matter approved by the board and to consider their decision. If vetoed, the proposal is returned to the board for review and further action. Charter Section 245E authorizes the council to assert jurisdiction over decision— Charter Section 245E authorizes the council to assert jurisdiction over decisions made by the City Planning Commission, area planning commissions, to take actions in place of those commissions. And so we looked at that as a potential option for your council to consider. So the options are, again, no change. The second is amend the charter or authorize the council to assert Charter Section 45E over board decision. So in this context, you would be given greater authority. The next slide specifically looks at the issue of rate-setting. And the question we ask here is, what level of oversight should the council retain over the adoption of new water and power rates? Water and electricity rates are set by the board and approved by the council in accordance with the charter. The department has identified several challenges with the current rate-setting process, such as inconsistent rate reviews with unclear timing and, at times, political matters in the rate-setting process. The current rate-setting process is, the DWP prepares a rate case. Rates are subject to ED4 and submitted for review by the mayor prior to consideration by the board. The OPA reviews the rate case and provides recommendations to the board. The DWP board considers the rate case for approval or rejection. If the DWP board approves, a rate case and the OPA review and are transmitted to the council for consideration. The council then considers a rate case for approval by ordinance. The council may reject that rate case and send it back to the DWP for additional analysis. If the council approves a rate case and the ordinance, it is sent to the mayor for approval. The mayor then considers a rate case and ordinance. So that is the current structure today. So the options that you have is grant the DWP the sole authority of setting rates. The second is to eliminate the council's approval of rates while continuing oversight authority with Charter Section 245. The third is to eliminate council approval of rates while adopting new oversight authority with an enhanced version of Charter Section 245, as I discussed earlier. And the final is to provide council with the authority to approve strategic planning documents, which would then guide rate changes. The department currently prepares an annual power-integrated resources plan and water infrastructure plan. These strategic planning documents would need to be more robust. But the idea here is that the council, on a regular basis, you know, every three or five years, requests that the department submit an overall plan of what their needs are, including what the likely rate increases would be. And by having a robust conversation about that plan and their projections onto the future, the council gives the department the authority to raise rates as long as it sticks within that strategic planning document. If the department then needs to go beyond it, then, of course, it would come back to the council for approval. But the idea here is that it gives the department the flexibility to operate within a larger strategic plan and still gives the council a role of planning out and being partners with the department for future planning. Slide number five is specifically on the issues of hiring and internal rule practices. And here we ask, how should internal rules and practices be handled by the DWP? The department has identified hiring challenges that they have experienced as a result of some internal rules and practices, certain charter sections, civil service rules, and the fact that human resources are currently centralized and handled by personnel. Regarding internal rules and practices, there are three specific rules and practices that are at issue. Seniority-based bid plan, which is established in the MOU provision that requires vacant positions to be offered first to internal candidates and then filled based on seniority. Effective Rule of One, which applies to clerical bid plans and requires a manager to select the candidate when only one bid or leave the position vacant. The final one is joint selection process, which requires the filling of a position that are special assignments to be joint decisions made by management and labor. Again, these are agreements that the department has reached with labor and are issues that have been raised by the department as challenges to hiring, among others. So in this case, the options are to maintain the current practice or to begin the process of negotiating the changing or the removal of these practices and further negotiations. Slide number six is specifically related to hiring in civil service. The question here is, should the charter be amended to provide hiring flexibility for the department? After working with the Personnel Department and the department, our offices identified a number of charter sections which do limit the department's flexibility. They include charter sections that limit the number of exemptions to 150 citywide, charter sections that require vacancies to the extent practicable to be filled by promotion and based on seniority, charter sections that limits the filing of vacancies to the top three hold scores or five candidates plus the number of vacancies, sections which set probationary periods for all entry-level classifications to not exceed 12 months for civilian positions. Civil Service Rule 5.26 establishes civilian probationary periods as six months for entry-level and 12 months for management classifications. And then finally, charter sections which provide flexibility to define DWP as three or more separate departments for layoff purposes. These are all examples of challenges that the department has identified to give them the flexibility to compete and to provide the kind of services that they seek to do. And so in order to make these amendments, this would have to go before the voters. So the options you have is to maintain these current provisions or to amend these various charter sections addressing exemptions, promotion, certification, probation, and layoffs. Slide number seven. In this slide, we specifically ask, should Civil Service Rule 4.10B regarding the seniority credits and examinations be amended? The department also identified that the Civil Service Rule that I just mentioned is a challenge when it comes to hiring. This rule provides seniority credit for a quarter of a point for each year's service be added to a candidate's final score in promotion exams. Management positions designated by the board are exempted. So in this case, again, you can maintain the status quo, amend to eliminate the seniority credit altogether, or amend Rule 2 cap to reduce seniority credit, similar to how management classifications are handled. The next slide again goes further on the issue of civil service, and then talks about the HR function and how it's divided among the department, the Personnel Department, and the CAO's office. And here we ask, should the charter be amended to remove personnel from DWP classification and examination process and place all human resource functions under the control of the department? Currently, the Personnel Department handles examinations and classifications, and my office acts as the chief labor negotiator on issues related to labor, particularly on issues of compensation. There are various studies that have been cited that talk about this decentralized HR function as creating an added barrier to hiring. And the department has further identified problems without of area testing and inability to make onsite job offers that impede their hiring process. In this case, again, you can maintain the existing structure or amend the charter to place all human resource functions under the control of the department. And of course, that would require a vote of the electorate. Slide number nine goes further on the issue of hiring in civil service. And here we ask, should the charter be amended to enable the new governance structure to have the option to eliminate civil service and implement a new employment system in its place? The motion identified as a recommendation the elimination of the civil service as an option for reform. In looking at this issue carefully, it is clear that it will take a significant amount of time to develop alternatives to the civil service system. And should such a recommendation to eliminate civil service would require that the civil service system be the default until another system is negotiated? So one of the things that we looked at in working closely with the city attorney and the department and personnel is, an option that's before you is to simply enable, within the charter, the department to negotiate alternatives to civil service over time. And that provides them the flexibility to engage in a conversation with labor to come up with a system that is more flexible, meeting the needs of the department. Of course, you still have the option of maintaining the status quo. And then the issue of contracts. Various studies have stated that the procurement process slows down capital investments and infrastructure repairs. As part of our review, we requested the department to identify its contracting challenges and propose what modifications they would like to seek. These proposed modifications to the procurement process may expedite the contracting process, which results in operational and administrative efficiencies. So the department has recommended a number of reforms in this area. The first is to increase the contracting authority of the general manager from $150,000 to a maximum of $5 million in five years. The second is to modify or eliminate ED4, which is a requirement established by the mayor for routine or ongoing operational contracts, such as software systems, licenses, and proprietary systems. The third is to adjust the RFP competitive negotiation requirements for the purchase of specialized equipment. The fourth is to eliminate the ordinance and requirement for design-build. And the final one is to eliminate the ordinance for requirement for power contracts. The Rules Committee instructed our offices to report on ways to improve or streamline this contracting processes. And some of these changes require charter amendments, some of them do not. And in our report back on this matter, we will provide a greater clarification on that point. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sharon.
Good morning. Thank you. The next slides relate to board structure. The motion did ask us to look at consideration for part-time or full-time board, as well as the size of the board. The current board consists of five part-time members appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council. The motion proposed to replace the existing board with a full-time professional board and expand the number of members. But today members, you heard Mr. Fuentes mention about a change in thinking and maybe focusing on a part-time voluntary board. In the city, the Board of Public Works is an example of a full-time board. The five members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council. For most municipal utility operations, it is governed by a part-time commissioners, and the size of those boards range from five to seven members. Options for the council to consider relative to a part-time or full-time board, you can consider a no change, which is maintaining the voluntary part-time member board, or considering a change, which would require a charter change, is a full-time board. With regard to the number of commissioners, one option would be no change, and this would be consistent with most city commissions in the city, which have five members, or converting it to seven members, which is consistent with the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners or the Board of Airport Commissioners, or even up to nine members, which is consistent with the Planning Commission and the Police Fire Commission, Pension Board. Next slide. Another issue to consider with regard to the board structure is the qualifications for the board members. The charter provides that appointed commissioners be registered voters of the city and comply with city ethics and state law requirements. This is really the basic qualifications for most board members in the city. The motion does call for board members to have expertise in such areas as public utility, management, environmental policy, consumer advocacy, or finance. These issues were actually considered during the 2010 reform discussions. Some utilities do require some expertise, such as the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. They do require that their five seats, the people filling those seats have experience in environmental policy or experience in ratepayer or consumer advocacy. There is a member-at-large as well. The charter also establishes for the City Ethics Commission some additional qualifications. These qualifications may include the commissioners not being able to hold another public office. They may not participate or contribute to a city election campaign. They may not employ or be registered as a lobbyist in the city. And they also are barred from running for elected office under certain circumstances. Reform options that the council may consider with regard to qualifications for the board are no change, or maintaining existing qualifications and including some additional qualifications, such as those required for the City Ethics Commission, or having additional experience related to utilities, or having more diversified experience, such as utility and also having community relations, business and finance backgrounds, et cetera. Next slide is board structure relating to term and term limits. Board members currently serve five years, staggered terms commencing on July 1. Currently, the Board of Water and Power Commissioners is not subject to any term limits. The motion proposes a full five-year term with undesignated term limits. Reform options that the council may consider with regard to term and term limits, no change. Changing the term to four years, this option is most suitable for an appointed or elected commission, or even shortening the term to three years. This would be more appropriate for a part-time appointed board. With regard to term limits, currently, the charter does not have any term limits for the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. If there is a desire to amend the charter, term limits could certainly be implemented. Within the existing charter, the Ethics Commission does have a one-year term limit for commissioners at a five-year period, and also for the Board of Police Commissioners, which has two five-year terms plus two years of any unexpired term that commissioner may have served. Next slide, also related to board structure, is the selection and removal of board members. Board members are currently selected by the mayor, subject to the council approval. Board members may be removed by the mayor. Council approval is not required for any removal. According to a 1999 RAN study, this model, they found, limited the board's ability to act as an independent, non-political governing entity. The motion introduced does not specify a particular appointment process, but does specify a full five-year term of service and no removal options. Some of the items that we considered as possible reform measures may be no change for the selection process, or the council could appoint all members with no mayoral approval. This would be something similar to the City Health Commission, or shared appointment authority by the mayor and council. Example of this would be the Ethics Commission, in which the three citywide elected officials plus the council president and President Protem actually appoint the commissioners. Or it could be a citywide election, either at-large or regionally. This would be something similar to the Sacramento Municipal Utility District, which has elected members. With regard to removal, the options could be no change, or allowing removed commissioner to appeal to the council. This is something similar to the police commissioner, if a police commissioner is removed, that there is an automatic appeal to the city council of the removal. Or the removal could be by the mayor with a majority vote of the council. This is similar for the City Ethics Commission, in which a removal of a commissioner would require both the mayor and city council approval. Or there could be a removal by two-thirds vote by the council, or a recall in the case of an elected official. Should be noted that the Rules Committee has already instructed us to report on a couple areas with regard to the board, compensation for the board, registered voter requirements, and qualifications of candidates. Next slide, we start with discussing the general manager appointment and removal. The board appoints the general manager with confirmation by both mayor and council. The board may remove the general manager with confirmation by the mayor. The general manager may appeal removal to the council, who may reinstate the general manager with a two-thirds vote. This is typical for most general managers in the city. Some of the prior studies have stated that the current process contributes to political interference, lack of organizational stability, and departmental inefficiencies. The motion proposes to empower the board to have complete authority for appointment and removal of the and removal of the general manager. Options for the council to consider with regard to the appointment of the general manager include no change, or vesting the board with sole authority for appointment of the general manager, or vesting the board with appointment authority, but council retaining the Charter's 245 section authority that Miguel discussed earlier, or vesting the board with appointment authority subject to the mayor's confirmation. With regard to removal, the options that the council may consider is no change to the existing charter, vesting the board with sole removal authority, vesting the board with removal authority, but the council retaining Charter Section 245 power, and vesting the board with removal authority subject to mayor's confirmation. Should be noted that within the existing charter, the council may, on its own volition and with the appropriate votes, could remove the chief of police, or the ethics director. And the city council approval for general managers of the city clerk and treasurer also require council approval. And next slide. Another issue to consider is the general manager compensation. The charter does establish that the board set the general manager's compensation within guidelines established by the council and with recommendations by the CAO. The motion proposes to remove the general manager compensation from council, removing the council from having guidelines, setting those guidelines. So, reform options with regard to the general manager compensation include no change, or vesting the board with the sole compensation-setting authority, vesting the board with compensation-setting authority with 245 power to assert jurisdiction, or vesting board with compensation-setting authority subject to mayor's confirmation. Next slide. Next slide relates to the topic of board support. The board currently receives both administrative and analytical support from division managers and departmental staff. The board has reviewed and considered about 1,500 proposals prepared by the department since January 2012. And of these proposals, the CAO has actually reviewed about 185 of those reports, representing only about 12% of the total. The motion proposes that the board could be more effective with dedicated support staff that provides CAO-like analysis and reporting. The 2015 IEA survey found that the DWP proposals do not sufficiently communicate consistent and reliable data. Charter amendments would be necessary to authorize the board to hire its own executive director and staff, or to give instructions to the OPA if that is the desire of this council to actually have the board to be able to instruct the OPA. Reform options that could be before you with regard to board support is no change in the existing framework, providing the DWP board with authority to hire its own analytical staff, similar to CAO and/or CLA staff support as described by the motion, or providing the DWP board with authority to instruct the OPA. Should be noted here that the Rules Committee has already instructed our offices and DWP to report on potential staffing levels for support of the board. The next topic is the Office of Public Accountability. The OPA was created in 2011, subsequent to Charter Amendment I, which was adopted after much discussion about reform measures for the department. The OPA provides public independent analysis of department action as they relate to water and power rates. The OPA functions independently of DWP management. It reports to the board, but is not instructed by the board. Various challenges with the OPA have been cited, such as the 2015 IEA survey, which identified the "ambiguous role" of the OPA as a governance challenge for the department. The mayor has expressed a desire for the OPA to function more as an inspector general with expanded access to information. And the controller has stated that the OPA must serve as a more forceful watchdog. The OPA reform will be contingent upon the decisions made by the council in other areas identified for reform, such as rate setting and board support. The OPA is actually submitted under separate cover some other possible areas of reform. These include formalizing communication methods between the OPA and DWP, increasing the OPA's staffing and budget, defining a process for reappointing the ratepayer advocate, and modifying the charter and/or administrative code to grant the OPA access to books and records. Reform options for the OPA could range from no change, maintaining the existing role of the OPA, or instructing the CAO and CLA with the OPA to report back on options for strengthening the OPA. Rules Committee has instructed us to provide that report. It should also be noted that reform for the OPA could be in the form of a revised ordinance setting forth the duties of the OPA. This would be consistent with charter. The major difference is if the board is able to instruct the OPA, a charter amendment would be required. Next slide relates to the city attorney. The city attorney pursuant to charter serves as a legal advisor to the city. The motion does identify the board's limited access to independent analysis challenge. However, the IEA survey nor the department have identified no specific problems with the city attorney being the advisor to DWP. With that said, reform options with regard to city attorney could be no change to the existing charter, directing the CAO and CLA to report back on options to strengthen the board's authority over litigation, or amending the charter and add code to empower the board to conduct procurement and legal counsel independent of the city attorney. It should be noted that within the existing charter, it does allow the DWP to request outside legal counsel. The only difference is that the city attorney must approve the hiring of that outside counsel. I'll turn this one over to Miguel.
Now on to the issue of the revenue transfer. In 1925, the city instituted the revenue transfer from the DWP's power revenue fund, and it's established in the charter. As you know, this matter is currently subject to litigation, so we recommend that discussions be handled pursuant to the direction and guidance of the city attorney. The motion that was submitted recommends capping the amount of the transfer to the levels that existed prior to the adoption of Prop 26, which was established in 2010. As you could see, the revenue transfer varies over the last several years. It is currently at 8% of the DWP's power system gross operating revenue. As an example, in 2013, the revenue was 253 million. In 2014-15, it was 266 million. And the mayor's proposed budget that will be before you later this week is recommended at 275 million. It should be noted that the transfer is not unique to Los Angeles. There are jurisdictions in California and around the country that indeed have transfers. And while the transfer itself is permitted within the charter, the amount of the transfer is not dictated in the charter. That is established by ordinance. So finally, we'll go into the schedule.
The last slide is the proposed ballot schedule. So, if there is a desire to place a measure on the November ballot, the last day for the council to actually request the city attorney to prepare the election resolution would be June 29. The city attorney would be required to turn this around very, very quickly, as the last day for the council to adopt the election resolution would be on July 1. If there is a desire to place the measure on one of the upcoming city ballots, March 2017 measure would require council action to direct city attorney by November 2 of later this year, with adoption of the election resolution by November 16. And if there is a desire to place the measure on a May 2017 ballot, the deadline for the council to request the city attorney to prepare the election resolution would be January 11, with adoption of the election resolution by January 25. There's two very important points to make with regard to this, somewhat related to the power revenue transfer. If there is a desire to place a general tax measure, the only ballot that is available to the city council to place a general tax measure would be on a city ballot. So that would be either the March or the May ballot. However, if there is a desire to make any changes to civil service, or if there is any action that would reduce the benefits of civil service employees, the only ballot that can be placed on is the November ballot, a statewide election that is pursuant to state law.
Okay, thank you. So, before we get into, or, yeah, the questions, I want to go to Mr. Harris-Dawson first. And thank you for the report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and members. I just want to thank everybody at the table. Folks have really pulled together and provided a process that not only council member that's new to the discussion, like myself, can kind of catch up and at least be conversant in the issue, but also everyday people that have come to the various hearings that we've done around the city and in this building. I think, members, many of you have stopped into the hearings here and there. I think the overwhelming thing we heard from almost every corner of the city was, people want a utility that is first reliable, second reliable, and third reliable. And then, of course, we want efficiencies, and we want it to be a workplace where people can build careers, as many people in my district has done. And then, one of the most moving things to me was the extent to which they, folks trust the mayor's office, the council, the leadership of DWP, the leadership in the neighborhood councils, to come up with a governance structure that makes sense, that actually makes the thing work as best it possibly can. And so, I want to thank all of you for being a part of that experience. I think it's one of the best experiences a resident can expect, to be able to take a deep dive in such a complex and consequential issue. And, you know, lastly, just want to take my hat off to Councilmember Fuentes, who I'm transferring the title of explainer-in-chief to, because every time a complicated issue comes up, and we get this crinkled look on our faces, either amongst residents or members, Mr. Fuentes steps up and makes it plain, so that we can have an opinion about it that makes sense on behalf of our residents. So, again, thank you all for everything that you've done, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you, Mr. President, for teeing up the conversation so eloquently. I think that you articulated all of the goals and intent of this body in exploring reform at the DWP. And to you, Councilmember Fuentes, for your incredible leadership on the E and E Committee, and your incredible leadership for this major initiative that this body is embracing, quite frankly. And also, city administrative office and legislative analyst, thank you so much, Ms. So, and Mr. Santiago, and your team, to the city attorney's office. This has been an all-hands-on-deck approach, which is what this requires. And, Mr. Fuentes, you mentioned at the outset of your words, at the beginning, you mentioned, this is a conversation that's long overdue. I know that I'm not the only one on this council who's been very restless since my first few days on the council. We've had many issues to tackle, many controversies that the DWP and the public have been ill-served by. Now, let's keep in mind that for 114 years, the Department of Water and Power has kept water flowing and has kept power in our homes in an amazing way. That really is the model in the industry. The Department of Water and Power has, among the most professional, seasoned, caring individuals in the department, and I take my hat off to the employees of the Department of Water and Power, because they have served this city so well. These controversies have not served them, nor the public, and just a few of them. The Joint Safety and Training Institute's controversy, our crumbling infrastructure and its deferred maintenance, and the inability to really get rates on par to keep up with the demands of the infrastructure needs that we have. The billing controversies, the inaction on hiring for customer service operators, the whole entire rate increase process, and then the city elected political process for union contracts, the list goes on and on and on. Now, it is my strong opinion that our current governance structure doesn't adequately address any of these issues, and they must be addressed. And so, I'm very optimistic through these conversations, both with the Rules, especially with the Rules Committee, and the dialogue that is happening now, we will land on the right levels of reform to take to the voters. I'm very optimistic after hearing this presentation. And I had several questions that you really removed me from the need of asking, because your presentation was so comprehensive. One thing that I must say, and that is, let's keep in mind that with the current rate structure, Recreation and Parks are going to be paying about $5 million more in water this year alone, and they'll be paying upwards of $20 million in the coming recent years. So, my question is, could, will, a ballot process possibly address that with some sort of rate that will serve the public in that sense? We're trying to figure out how we can keep up with the demands of the rate increases across the whole Department of Recreation and Parks, across the city that, of course, serve the public, and, more importantly, our youth and our families, to keep the recreation centers functioning and active. So, I ask that question in the context of a ballot initiative, because I feel that I must as chair of Arts Parks.
Mr. O'Farrell, the question you've asked is complicated, indeed. As you probably know, what's called Proposition 218 limits our ability to have tiered rates to some extent. The analysis is one I don't think we're prepared to make this morning, but it's something we can certainly look at, as to whether it requires a ballot initiative, or there's some other way to get where you want to go. But I think it's a complex analysis, and we focused most recently on the electric rates and the Prop 26 constraints on those.
Mr. Bonnet.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to you and Mr. Fuentes for sparking this conversation, which is long overdue. Thanks to everybody around the table for the thorough presentation. I wanted to ask a question about the governance reform stuff, because I think of DWP, from my perspective, we have to have the critical missions that everybody has talked about, reliable service, fiduciary responsibility to the rateholders. But for me, another, I think, critical mission for the department is helping the city be as green and as sustainable, as environmentally friendly, as we possibly can be. And over the arc of the years I've been with the city, I've seen a lot of tension between DWP and elected officials over that. In the most recent battle of rate hikes, frankly, the environmental community was with DWP urging us to do higher rate hikes. But my longer memory reminds me of times when, prior to this general manager, elected officials in the city had to pull this department kicking and screaming into doing anything sustainable and environmentally friendly and getting off coal. And I'm afraid that if we give up too much of our authority, that we slip into a time where that could be the case again. I have a lot of faith that there's always going to be a powerful grassroots voice compelling elected officials to look out for the environment. So, one of the prisms through which I look at the question of governance reform is, you know, can there be safeguards in there to keep pushing the department in a green direction? And I worry about the impacts. So, everybody in Los Angeles, I think, you'd poll 80% if you said we want to do DWP reform. But I'm not sure that if you asked folks what that meant, that the average voter would say, "The city council meddles too much in DWP." I agree, DWP may feel that way. But I want to get a sense from anyone around the table, but particularly from Marcy, about what specific things that the council's role and the mayor's role impedes at DWP, so I can think through specifically what the fix would be in governance reform.
It's always a fascinating question to ask. It's more the multi-layered processes that have been overlaid on a case-by-case basis, mostly in the last 15 years, that create multiple thresholds, duplicative processes. By the time I get something to council, council's usually very interested, they make decisions quick, they make them based on the constituency, and we move forward. But to get to council can be an incredible lift, given so many checks and balances that have been put in place over time. It's a $3 billion a year in purchases that we're doing. At the very least, we should be able to buy poles, and wire, and cable without having to go through a multi-level approval process. We spend an inordinate amount of time. I have $1 million in front of the board today, and it's to buy portable urinals, and there's been a 20-minute discussion on it to date. We don't want to do those kind of things. We're wasting ratepayer money. The other is, so what I need is procurement reform, hiring is another. When Eliso Canyon happened, our gas manager suddenly decided he needed to retire. The traders underneath him went, "Well, we don't see where there's anybody over us," so they bid out. And suddenly, I'm left with a significant exposure that I'm not able to manage, and the only people I can hire are a list of mechanical engineers, none of whom have ever been in the gas business. That's the kind of flexibility I need. Most of my issues are in procurement and hiring.
Okay, procurement, contracting, hiring, I get that. Are there other examples where the city council needs to sort of pull back from being engaged?
I don't necessarily think it's the council. I think if we left more passive means, you know, like 245, I don't see a necessary reason to get rid of any of that. But it's the fact that it actively moves forward. Everything over three years comes to council.
Got it.
So, I end up with my staff trying to manipulate everything into a less-than-three-year timeframe because of the laborious process and timing.
I understand. That's very helpful. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you, and thank you all for this very thoughtful proposal, or not proposal, but presentation, and certainly to Mr. Fuentes for driving this. It is one of those issues that we hear about all the time. This council, as the council president said, is not shying away from taking on the big issues, and DWP reform is top on that list. I wanted to sort of, to get into the weeds on some of it and try to understand some of the issues, like the city, the oversight issue. I get that conceptually, you know, as Mr. Fuentes framed, you know, there is a difference between the ratepayer interest and the taxpayer interest. It's interesting, not everybody agrees on what that interest is. I have people coming up to me sometimes while we're dealing with the rates, and accusing the city of wanting to raise the rates so that we can get more revenues, so that we can, you know, they assume that's our reason. And then, on the other side, people saying, "Well, the city's never going to, because we're so subject to, you know, pressures about raising the rates," and certainly people in my district complain about any sort of rate increase, "that we're too gun-shy about raising the rates." So, people are assuming motivations as taxpayers, whether, you know, on both sides of the issue, that are different than what our motivation might be if we were just representing the ratepayer. That being said, you know, how do we parse that? And I see you mentioned a number of different things, rate setting, debt issuance, salary So, the rate setting, I think, is, in my mind, is the clearest one, where a little bit of distance is probably a good thing from, to distinguish between the ratepayer's interest and the taxpayer's interest. I wanted to understand a little bit more about some of these others, and particularly the one that concerns me is the one Mr. Bonin mentioned, the policy matters of citywide significance, of how we, you know, of where that line is between the ratepayer and the taxpayer, and if you could shed light on the pros and cons of that, you know, where that falls in this decision, whose governance structure it should be on.
I could start. Again, it's a difficult one, because in smaller cities, there's a bright line, really, between the issues of ratepayers and that of taxpayers. And the boards manage to the ratepayer interest, and then the policy body imposes certain threshold in policy areas, in environmental or in financial, and then the board has to manage within those parameters. And it's fairly clear. Here, I think it's a little more complex. It's being made clear, I think, by the application of the ratepayer advocate, whom I don't always necessarily agree with, but is at least in the camp of protecting just that group of people. And I would urge caution when you revisit their charter and meaning, that you don't somehow marginalize or lose the independence of that office.
I think for mayor and councils should still continue to focus on the big policy issues and set that. But as we look at it, if we have a ratemaking case that is stabilized and predictable, and let's say it's the Olympic model, that it's every four years, councils should be able to determine with the mayor's office to set up what policy priorities they would like DWP to take on, so then it would be on the commission with the department to take those into account as they're determining their rate structure, so it makes sure that the policy, big policy, significant citywide issues still continue to happen at this body and with the mayor's office. So, we do have also that concern, but I think the predictive ratemaking would help merge those two together and ensure that DWP continues to be the best, you know, the best green energy utility in the country. Thank you.
Do you want to add to that?
On that point, one of the options to consider is the four-year plan or a five-year plan that the department presents, that ties all the pieces together, the environmental goals, the infrastructure goals, goals related to hiring, goals related to service delivery, and map it out so that they're outcome-driven, and the council then adopts those outcomes, but then allows the department the flexibility to reach those outcomes based on the sequencing, and the timing, and the resources, and the rate-setting authority that allows them to get there. And so, it's an option for your council to consider. In some ways, this last rate-setting process was sort of a version of that, where the department laid out a multi-year rate-setting objectives. They did a phenomenal job communicating those objectives to the community, presenting it to your council, working closely with my office and the CLA office and the ratepayer advocate to understand what those are, and the mayor's office. And then, ultimately, you authorized the department the up-to kind of scenario where they were able to set rates. But then, we were, one of the options to consider is going beyond just rates, but looking at it much more holistically as an organization.
I'll pick, and then maybe I'll come back and press my button again.
Just go on, go on at this point.
In terms of the governance structure of, I know, Mr. Fuentes, you've transitioned a little bit, going from the full-time to the part-time. I'm still trying to get my head around that, which, you know, the pros and cons of both. And, you know, even kicking around the idea of some sort of a hybrid, and wanted to get your sense about that, you know, to talk about the pros and cons of the full-time folks, and maybe having, you know, three full-time people and five part-time people, where you have the technical experts who have a voice and a vote, and you have community folks and other experts as well. Is that something that's been considered? What are your thoughts in terms of the pros and cons of those different approaches? And the approach of the part-time versus full-time?
You know, I think one thing it's important to put up front is that there's no right answer, right? There's not, you know, there's not a manual somewhere you could go and say, "If you design an organization this way, this is what guarantees the best outcome," because part of it is really going to evolve over time. The issue is really around what flexibility and authority will that board have, and how will they be empowered to deliver on the objectives that you set out as a policy? And based on that authority, then the time that it takes to make decisions will be determined. So, if, to the extent to which your council gives the department greater flexibility to authorize contracts, to negotiate labor-related issues, to develop a multi-year strategic plan and rate-setting, then obviously, if you're a sitting board member, it takes more time. You know, there, but, you know, if you look at the other commissions, I know some commissioners who, frankly, this, it is their full-time job, even though they don't get paid, because they roll up their sleeves and they take that role very seriously, and they have the ability to do so, and others who do it as part of other responsibilities that they have. But the best answer is really deciding what authority are you giving them, and then step back to determine what kind of time would that be required, and how do you recruit the best and most talented individuals to lead the department based on that authority?
And obviously, inextricably linked is the analytics that we're giving them as well, whether we're giving them their own CAO-type of group, because the less that they have in terms of independent analysis arm, the more we need to rely on their own personal expertise, you know, versus having more of the civilian, civilian, so to speak, folks.
For the neighborhood councils, there has not been any resistance, actually, to compensating the new commissioners. The hesitancy about a full-time board has largely resulted from a discussion about the dangers of a board getting, a full-time board getting co-opted, either by management or by labor, or realizing that we have a part-time board now, and I can tell you from personal experience with the commissioners, it's about a half-time job as it is, and it should always be. That's why people don't object to paying for it. But the commissioners now bring a whole bunch of diverse interests, and when you are doing something in addition to being a board commissioner, the general feeling is that particular interest, whether it's your technical specialty, or whether it's your community specialty, is brought to the decision-making process, just as you as elected representatives bring that to a legislative decision. So, that was the preference. It's not necessarily against the full-time, except the idea that if you assign this a full-time salary for the full-time work, there's also the temptation to hire people who may not, who may not be technically or community-interest optimal, that you'd be better off with a compensated part-time board, but the compensation would not be the full-salary compensation. This is part of just what the discussion has been in the community, and I think that personally, I'd like to see this left up to ordinance.
Left up to ordinance?
In other words, not have the charter specify whether this is a full-time or part-time board, but to allow the board to be compensated according to city ordinance. That leaves it up to you guys.
Chris. Dexter Pickle, do you want to add? Go ahead.
Fred Pickle, Office of Public Accountability. One of the areas that's sometimes a challenge within DWP is the separation of authority and responsibility. And my concern with having a full-time board is, we don't want to have six CEOs of the organization. We want one CEO, so there's clear authority and responsibility for leadership and the general, and the general manager, and the board functions on a fiduciary basis.
That's a good point. What about this hybrid idea? Has that ever been tried anywhere, where you have some board members? Or is that, does that sound like a non-starter?
We're not familiar with any hybrid models. The one concern that could be raised about hiring, having a hybrid model, would be whether you're creating a second class of commissioners.
Yeah, where you could look into having ex-officio members of some sort that have, that are full-time, or maybe even having the ratepayer advocate, or folks like that as ex-officio members, and then having a full-time or a part-time board that's not fully paid, but you have folks who are sitting on that board, maybe who don't have the vote, but who can provide that kind of expertise. Did you want to say something, Marcy?
The challenge with ex-officio membership for the ratepayer advocate is, under charter and ordinance, the ratepayer advocate is supposed to advise the board. And it's odd to have an ex-officio member advising the board, and that may also create Brown Act problems.
There's a document that came out that summarizes a lot of the governance options in the municipal sector across the nation. And while you can see there is some part-time, full-time reflected in there, I didn't see any hybrid models, so I wouldn't even know where to look to get an idea.
All right. See, my time is up. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts?
I want to thank you for your leadership and being a strong referee on all these issues, and making sure that all interested voices are heard. And I want to recognize the chairman of E and E also for his good work in bringing this issue to the fore and bringing this discussion forward. As we move this forward, I want to remind people on the environmental side what's at stake with the utility in the face of climate change. And rather than remove oversight of DWP, especially on the big policy issues, I think the council actually needs to be more involved. It's our responsibility to reduce greenhouse gases and our greenhouse gas footprint, and I think we need to absolutely maintain that responsibility. And first, I want to mention a couple of things that weren't in the report. And talking about our water system on page 45 of the Navigant Report, it says, "The benefits of a collaborative approach could be further amplified by creating a single entity with the sole purpose of managing all aspects of the city's water, wastewater, stormwater, and flood protection services," and notes that to do that would require several charter changes. Given the projections for our drought continuing dramatically next year, and possibly in the indefinite future, and while we're looking at messing with the charter, I'd like a report back on how DWP and public works could initiate a study to create a fully-integrated water group. I'm not necessarily suggesting that it land in one place or another, or how it's structured, but I think that's important to look at. Also, I'd like to understand how we can use charter reform to ensure that access to clean energy solutions are equitable, and that participation isn't limited by the neighborhood you live in or the size of your paycheck. So, I'd like to have a look at both those issues, which really weren't covered. But I think that'll help play a key role in our moving forward on greenhouse gas reduction. As far as some of the things that were discussed, my highest priority on this list is actually doing some of the things relating to contract changes. I think right now, there's a lot too much in the way of minutia and small contracts that the department has to spend their time with, and I would encourage that all items that were suggested move forward on that score. As far as civil service and personnel, I think eliminating civil service is a terrible idea for the very reasons that civil service was created in the first place. However, I think we could do more with personnel to solve these problems. I'm not sure that that piece will require charter change or not, but we certainly should be looking at giving them more resources to do DWP hiring. We'd probably, as reluctant as I am to do it, should give them more exempt positions, and I'm not sure exactly how many and where that lands, but I think there are a lot of things that could be done without removing the Personnel Department from the process. Also, I like the idea of connecting the tax rates to a strategic plan, rather than just sort of doing them randomly with whatever happens to be the push of the moment when we set the rates. I think at the same time, the DWP board could have the primary responsibility for that, as long as we still have a 245 ability in that regard. I think the board members should, at least some of the board members should have environmental and technical qualifications, possibly all of them, possibly a combination, that might even be a better idea. But I think the majority of the board should have some good technical knowledge, and that should be a written requirement, and some members should be community members as well. As far as having their own city attorney, I generally think that's a bad idea. I think it's more a solution looking for a problem, and I think if we do that... I think it's more a solution looking for a problem, and I think if we do that, it's a slippery slope, and then we'll blink and we'll find that the port has their own city attorney, and the airport has their own city attorney, and Public Works has their own city attorney, and at some point, I think we'll have gone in what I think is kind of a silly direction. And lastly, I think, in terms of the ratepayer advocate, I think they need to be looking at beyond just the obvious costs that are before them, they need to look at the true cost of energy production. So I'd like to see our Office of Public Accountability include the cost of positive and negative externalities, and among other things, its assessment of power purchase agreements. If, for instance, we're looking at the cost of natural gas power, I want included an assessment of the cost of cleanup of chemical leaks and impact on groundwater, and the cost of methane leaks to the atmosphere versus clean energy alternatives. When you look at it that way, the cost of some cheap fuels are not really so cheap. And I introduced a motion in 2014 on this subject, Council File Number 14-0516, which deals with this issue, and I'd like that included in the report back.
Okay, Mr. Corretts, we will, a lot of the questions that you brought up, we're looking at in committee, so I will make sure that we jump on that. Now, it would appear at this time that, Mr. Fuentes, you can say whatever it is, but you may want to close, because I have no other members on the queue, so why don't you incorporate that in your comments?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. West. And I'll be very brief. I wanted to highlight, I pressed my button, colleagues, because I heard from a couple of our colleagues here, this idea that somehow the city council has the ability to make policy at the Department of Water and Power. We do not. We introduce motions, and we have conversations, and we infer and insinuate, but the board, the commission, they have the sole policymaking authority at the Department of Water and Power. So I think it's important for us to remember that as we're talking, because the statement about matters of citywide importance or goals that we'd like to see, I think, are very important. And this is the opportunity for us to be able to temper what it is that is communicated informally to the board and what is actually realized by the board. So it's a very helpful piece of the conversation. The thing that occurred to me as we've been talking over the last couple of days is that there really needs to be a distinction drawn between this proprietary agency and the rest. And when you look at the charter, it very much alludes to them being very similar. And they are, from a governance perspective, if I could sort of stretch the concept of governance for a second, but they are very distinct. The airport and the harbor, as a matter of fact, really are management companies. They operate leases. They have an obligation to the people who are their lessese, and that's effectively it. The utility is in a very, very distinct position. It has an obligation that extends far larger than just managing resources. It has an obligation to serve the residents of Los Angeles. So when I speak to the fact that the taxpayer and the ratepayer, we need to understand who that is. In many cases, it's the same person. But it's that tension between the two that we're trying to thread a needle here, and it's not an easy sort of conversation to have. And you just heard from some of our colleagues here, the desire to want to impose more on the rate base than what might be mandated, and for good reasons, we may want to do more than what's mandated. But we've got to figure out how to temper that conversation, understand the loading order of priorities. But I think ultimately, what we've got to do is figure out how to impanel, trust, and let the enterprise manage this incredible resource that is the Department of Water and Power for the residents of Los Angeles, because the resident wears both of those hats in many cases. So I, council president, am absolutely thrilled by the conversation. I think this helps inform us even more as we progress, and I hope that we are able to put something together that is worthy of your consideration, colleagues, in the near future. And thank you again to the staff for their participation and their tireless commitment to serving the residents of Los Angeles. Thank you all for being here.
And I too want to thank everybody, all the staff, all of the members. And again, any questions you want to have answered, you can submit a note to me or to the Rules Committee, and I will ensure that those questions are answered. Any recommendations that you want us to vet, please get that to us as soon as possible. Like I indicated, there will be a meeting this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. It will be at the West Los Angeles Performing Arts Theater in my district at 3020 Crenshaw Boulevard. All are welcome. One of our hosts there will be Slank. Again, if you have data, you want us to look into it, get it to me, recommendations or what have you. We're going to have this meeting Thursday. We hope to have at least another meeting, where we'll invite a couple of folk, Mr. Corretts from the environmental community, and we're going to ask Labor to come and give a brief presentation as well. And still in hopes to put together a recommendation that we will bring before this body. So I want to thank everyone. Thank you all. This was a good conversation. Thank you. Madam Clerk, where that brings us, where?
All of this is referred to committee. She just told me I had to say that, huh?
All of this is referred to committee. Now, where does that bring us on today's agenda?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those motions are posted and they are referred. Tony, thank you. And for Joanne and Ms. Best, everybody from all the neighborhood councils, thank you. Okay, announcements, members, announcements. Mr. O'Farrell, announcements.
Thank you, Mr. President. It wasn't until 1990, May 17th, to be exact, that the World Health Organization declassified homosexuality as a mental disorder. Today, President Barack Obama issued the following statement, LGBT rights are human rights, and that the United States honors the work of activists and will continue to support their struggle for human dignity. Today is International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia, and Biphobia. It was created in 2004 to draw attention precisely to what I just described, of policymakers, opinion leaders, social movements, public in the media, and any infringement on the civil rights of any of us is an infringement on the civil rights of all of us.
And I agree with you, and that's all part of this conversation on hatred and race and that you and I will be having. So I'm glad that you announced that. Any other announcements? Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. To reiterate, because we want really good attendance, on Thursday night, we'll be having the hearing at 6 o'clock at the West Angeles Performing Arts Center, the last Rules Hearing out in the community on DWP reform, so we invite everybody to come there. Also, very, very important, parents, 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 if you're looking for things for your young people to do during the summer, we're very excited. We have a few free scholarships to the DJ Camp in Ojai. It's a campground right near the beach, where young people learn how to DJ, connect sound equipment, create contracts with venues, do lighting, plan an event, and the whole nine yards. They are signing up applicants on Wednesday night at Balden Hills Crenshaw Mall at 6 o'clock. There'll be DJs there, food, music, the whole family is invited. Bring your young people, sign them up. We look forward to having a lot of participants from the city of Los Angeles there.
Any other announcements? I don't see any. Could all please rise? All in the council chambers, please rise for adjourning motions. If everyone could please rise for adjourning motions. I'm going to look to my left first, Mr. Fuentes, your side. I do not see any motions to my left. I now look to my right, Mr. Rue, Mr. Weezer's side, I do not see any. With that said, members, we will see you tomorrow. This council meeting is adjourned.